Thanks for joining us tonight. We're going to get started. Yep, we're going to get started. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I'm Scott Salato. I'm the Communications Director for the county. And this is a, our, coming back to Suffolk, I guess. We attempted this last fall, but we got pushed back a little bit due to some personal issues and some scheduling. So we're back here in the spring, and thank you for coming. We've been moving around the county with our town halls. Part of the county executive's initiative to really increase transparency in the government. His campaign and his administration is basically based on a three-legged stool, as we've discussed. We have writing the fiscal ship, restoring fiscal integrity and accountability to government. The second leg of the stool is preserving the county of Rockland and the green spaces, the open spaces, overdevelopment, fighting back against illegal housing, that kind of stuff. And the third is economic development. I took them out of order, but economic growth, economic development, bringing in ratables to help people stay here and want to live here for a long time and not move out because they can't afford it. So we've been bringing this around to different communities in the county. We've done Thiel's in North Rockland, we've done Nanyouette, we've done Tappan Zee in Orange Town, we've done Nanyouette in Clarkstown. Now we're here in Suffolk, and we thank you all for coming. Any questions that we have? It's a small enough group. It's a friendly group.
How do you know?
It seems friendly. It seems friendly. Typically, when we have a larger audience, we'll do questions in writing, and we'll submit questions, and I'll take a look at them. But tonight, it seems like an intimate crowd. I do want to recognize a couple of folks from the Village of Suffolk. Markounis, Frank Hagan, Bob Morris, all from the Village. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for being here. It's great to have elected officials join us, and it's always a gift because you guys know what it's like to be an elected official, and the stress of it, and the drain, and it's good to see you here. So thank you for coming. With that, I'll turn it over to the county executive.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Also, Jim Giattino, the past mayor, previous mayor of Suffolk. Good to be here, Jim. First of all, thank you very much for coming tonight. We are streaming. I hope we're streaming on our website. I'm going to get a little more comfortable if all don't mind that. First of all, I've run into some people tonight who made me remind me of something. It reminded me of something. I had a medical challenge over the last couple of weeks. Prostate cancer. Had the surgery already. And being a public official, there's no such thing as a secret. Your life is just open. There's no getting around it, which, you know, it is what it is. But the one thing I have to say is that I have to tell you all, and folks who are listening tonight, the amount of well wishes that I got, the emails, the letters, the cards. My house is full of cards right now. Just that it has been helpful to me in feeling better and given me strength. And I want to thank everybody who had a thought and a prayer for me. It means a lot, and I just really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. The other part of it is that, given the fact that this could not be a secret, it was an ideal opportunity to urge people to get tested, men to get tested for prostate cancer. My dad died a horrible death at the age of 59. Unchecked prostate cancer turned to bone cancer. I'm 63, almost 64. I'm at the point where I'm ready to say, will you still love me? Will you still need me when I was 64? But that kind of thing, I mean, especially to the guys, you know, father-son issue, you recognize that as a real dynamic. So, you know, I urge people to get tested. It's painless. It doesn't hurt. It gives you options. That's the most important thing I can tell people, tell the men out there. Anybody past 30 with a history, past 40 without a history, get checked once a year. I've done it religiously. It gave me a chance to gauge what was going on in my body, and it gave me an opportunity to make an informed choice. And there are a lot of choices, but it's your choice. You get the ball hit at you, you pick it up, you throw it in the direction you want to go. So I just really want to thank everybody for the good wishes and what you've done for me and my family in that regard. So thank you very much. I want to just cover some things that we've been doing. I think that's the most important thing to begin with, and then we'll do a Q and A and look into some of the concerns you have. We can get responses to it. It'd be helpful to you. Rockland's Code Initiative. You may have heard about this. I've talked about this when I ran for office. We have a problem here in Rockland County. We have illegal housing. And I'm not talking about a little apartment for grandma. I'm talking about slumlord housing. That is the focus of what we've been trying to address. And unfortunately, in some areas of this county, going to court is a slap in the wrist. And anybody who even remotely understands the dynamics of a slumlord, and my background being in law enforcement, I certainly get it, understands a $200 fine is not going to stop them. When you're making 10, 12, 13, 15,000 a month, you're not going to be worried about a couple hundred bucks. It's just not going to be a concern. So we spent some time trying to find ways to address this, a different strategy. And I have to give my county attorney a lot of credit, Tom Humback, and our Health Commissioner, Dr. Patty Rupert, along with Gordon Renn, who carried this banner for a number of years when we didn't have the will, in my view, to deal with it. We are using the sanitary codes. The health codes in New York State are broad. They're overwhelming in many ways. And we're using them judiciously. We're using them properly. To give you a sense of what we can do, we had one particular property on South Madison, as I recollect, would not correct the conditions. These are health violations. The fines for health violations are max of $2,000 per day per violation. After much weeping and gnashing of teeth, this person was hit with a $38,000 fine. Now, when you're talking 10, 12, 15,000 a month with a $38,000 fine, that's serious money. Okay? Also, the way this is handled is within the Health Department through hearings, through referees, not through the courts in the towns, in the villages. So for areas that are looking for a cooperative approach from the county, we're happy to do it. For areas who are not addressing the problem, fine, we're doing it anyway. We are also utilizing something that was very successful in New York. The worst of the worst go on our website. We put pictures up. We put names up. Apparently, one of them didn't particularly care about that. So I get the concern that Mr. so-and-so was upset about his name being on the website. I said, get his name, get his email address. When I'm worried about that, I'll email him. I'm not concerned about that. We also are going to use the IRS. We are finding cash receipts for rent. That's income. It was good enough for Al Capone, good enough for John Gotti, it's good enough for slumlord. What drives me here is one very simple thing that I've spoken about. I'm a former first responder. I am not going to sit around and wait for the inevitable tragedy to happen before I take action. Not going to happen. All right? I'm not going to wait for a firefighter to die, a volunteer firefighter to die. The families involved here are the families with the smallest voice in our county. These are people who are here, who are at the poorest rung of the ladder. They have no voice to speak of. So I think in a society such as ours, we should be looking out for them. So it has already started to get some attention. In the first four weeks, we have seen a jump of double, from 70 last year to 135 complaints this year that we're handling, that we're taking in. Complaints can be made confidentially. We are on our website. You don't have to give your name, because again, some of these folks are here undocumented, and, you know, these people are being victimized. And wherever you are, wherever you may be, on the issue of illegal aliens or undocumented immigrants, whatever you want to call them, wherever you are, these are families with children. They have a right not to be killed because a slumlord doesn't care about their well-being. So we are being very aggressive on that, and it's something I said means a lot to me because I've seen what happened already as a former first responder, where firefighters go into fires and can't get out, and some die. So that's what we're doing. And this is not going to be a highly core situation because we're looking at hiring a couple more people. We see the fines as something that will end up taking care of most of the cost. There'll be a registry, which is free the first year. It will be charged the second year for apartments, if you have apartments. Again, a very modest fee, something that was done years ago in Rockland County. It was disbanded because of the financial crisis. So it's a methodical approach, and we're going to continue doing that. Welfare fraud. I'm very happy to report that when I came into office, I gave very specific directions to my DSS, my Department of Social Services, Sue Sherwood, my commissioner, Steve Hamilton, who was in charge of investigations. I said, chase them down. Stop it. Whatever you've got to do, stop it. If it's not legal, stop it. Somebody's trying to game the system, stop it. Now, we have limits, obviously, because the state unfortunately, and I'll say this publicly, the state enables fraud. There's no other way of putting it. Their rules enable fraud. My attitude is this. If you want to charge my county, you, all of you, for Medicaid, give it to me. I'll run it. Don't you run it, all right, and tell me how to do it. All right? You have online reporting. We have had situations where people have gotten benefits and they're in another country because it takes a number of months to figure it out. This is the system that we have. So self-attesting to how much money you're making, citizenship, it's ridiculous. You're getting fewer people coming in. Ostensibly, this saves money. Yeah, it saves money upfront, then you pay for it later on through fraud. My DSS reported back the results of their efforts, and I focused on front-end detection because the problem is, once someone gets the benefits and goes off on their merry way, now, we have to make a decision whether we invest your local tax dollars to recover 2/3 of the dollar that is actually state money. And when we recover the money, the state coffers get it, not us. So we could be spending X, recovering X minus 30%. It's a losing proposition. But however, if we stop them before they get the money, before they get approved, that prevents all that. So the front-end detection system, in my view, was a money saver. It was a good strategy. Before they get in the door, we could stop the money from going out the door. We increased the amount of savings in the front-end detection by 68% in the first year. $1.4 million, up from about $800,000 the year before. That's the effort that's going, and it's ongoing. Some of the things that are going on with that area is very frustrating. You have, I know everybody here understands, and I've pushed this in the legislature, to do something to encourage the state legislature to change their rules. Everybody in this room understands means testing. You work your entire life. You need long-term care. In order to get Medicaid, you have to basically spend everything you have down. And that's the way it is. Now, we can quarrel. We can argue about it. However, if you're looking for public assistance, you don't have to do that. A woman came in, was interviewed by my people, and I tell my people to ask a million questions. Some don't have to answer it, but ask them anyway. A woman came in and went through the process. She was asked about a bank account. $350,000 in the bank. So she was asked a common sense question. Why don't you use some of that in the interim? Oh, no. That's my child's education. That's the system that we deal with right now. Okay? I'm urging the state now to have limited resources that have to be taken out before you come for your tax dollars. And let me put it to you this way. And I had a very stirring debate with a young person, who was a county employee, by the way, at a table one day. He saw nothing wrong with this. I said, let me put it to you this way. My neighbor's name is Steve. Let's say I'm working at my last job, which was down in this city, and I get laid off. And I go, we're not going to do it. Steve. I got laid off. Okay. What do you need? First thing your neighbor's going to say? 30 years plus? Could you, give me 100 bucks. Of course, no problem at all. But, you know, don't you have like $300,000 in the bank? Oh, yeah, but I don't want to spend that now. There's too much of, you hear, federal, state, local, and there is a reality to that. I understand that. But people, you hear the conversation about money. It's the government's money. No, not the government's money. It's your money. That's exactly what's happening. So when you personalize it and say, would you allow that to happen? No, you wouldn't allow that to happen. So we're trying to change it at the state level, but unfortunately, that is what we're dealing with. But we need our state representatives to change the paradigms of what happens here. And that, but these are the things that can madden you, I'm sure. They certainly madden me as a county executive. The budget. We have been very successful year one. We did a lot of work. We founded an organization. It was $42,000 away from default. Now, I know we're not all rich people here, you know, including the guy in front here. $42,000 is not a princely sum to have in the bank. Hey, Ralph. County budget of 3/4 of a billion dollars to have $42,000 left in the bank on payroll day in the third week of January is absolutely scary. That's how close we came to defaulting. That's how we started. We moved the entire year. We were able to move the mental health transit to NIAC. We were able to compress departments. We let people left, people stayed, people who left did not get replaced, especially at the higher levels. So we did a lot of work to try to maintain that institute, very common sense things, such as overtime controls, things that really were not in place. I give a lot of credit to my deputy county executive, Guillermo Rosa. He is a mess as a public administration. He knows how to run things. I have a background too. So we're able to kind of, you know, double team our department heads. We have a leaner government right now, which is very important. But we actually are going to end up, it's an auditable, we're going to end up with an ordered surplus between $4 and $5 million for 2014. It's the first surplus in memory for county government. It's not a lot. I understand that. But it's important that the people hear that we're changing, that we're getting things done. We're moving in the right direction. That's really very, very critical. The budget right now, with that positive, we now have to deal with the sins of the past. As we all know, the county borrowed a deficit bond of $96 million. We had an additional 40-plus million in deficit. $138.5 million is the deficit walking in the door. We are the most stressed county in the state of New York. I hate that. I have that hanging up on my office. So we will not, we will, this is where we start. Now we go up. We did get a bond increase from Standard and Poor's and from Moody's over the past year and change. I was told, my deputy and I went up to Albany, to the island, to meet with the agencies. We asked, what about, we laid out what we're doing, you know, our plan of action, our business plan. They were very impressed. I said, what's the chance of an upgrade this year, meaning 2014? They're very nice. They said, well, slim to none, and the slim trains leaving station. I said, okay. They were honest about it. By July, we had our upgrade. Then we got a positive outlook. Then we got a positive credit score, a positive credit outlook. 2015, S and P upgraded us. So we're going in the right direction. This happens because we're paying attention, and we're getting the job done. It has to be done in order to make sure we're watching our dollars. But again, we have some challenges. Summit Park Nursing Home is, right now, is a fiscal albatross around our neck. The Rockland County Health Corporation, the LDC, as we call it, who is control of the sale, there's an ongoing issue. They're trying to go through the hospital bureaucracy. It's been going on longer than I would like, but we're coming to an end of that line right now, where the sale has to happen. But we have, right now, a $17 million bill to pay every year for the next 10 years. It may be a little bit less because we have the deficit reduction at. That's going to reduce it a bit. But $13.5 million for the deficit bond, up to $4 million for the deficit act, $17 million. That is a lot of money. That is a lot of money for county government. The hospital sale and nursing home sale is very important and very key to this. So we're looking at trying to deal with this. On top of that, of course, we have unfunded state mandates that are unpredictable, sales tax and mortgage tax revenue, which is unpredictable. The one thing we are trying to do very simply is, we're trying to lean out our organization as best as we can and understand something. We've had, we had over 3,000 employees maybe seven years ago. We have 2,100-plus employees right now. So there are fewer employees that have inefficiencies. We are doing a lot more with a lot less. And we have expectations of our employees, and they haven't had a raise. Some municipalities have given people raises. They haven't had a raise in four years. So, you know, it's something, you know, it's a balancing act, but we have to prepare for a possibility that the Summit Park Nursing Home will not be sold by the LDC. All right? With that, our department heads were instructed last month at the cabinet meeting that they'll prepare for 5 and 10% cutbacks in departments. That's their decision to make. Just like they're there, they're to watch the variance of their departments, make sure they don't overspend, they have to come up with a plan of action in case we end up with a fiscal crisis. We're not going to wait till it happens. It happens all too often in government. That's how government gets in trouble. So departments who are not intertwined with the Summit Park Nursing Home as much, 5%. Those who are intertwined through allocations in their budget, for example, General Services or MIS, that's a 10%. We want contingency plans to put into place in case we need that. I liken this right now to, what we're doing here with the county finances, is we have a big ship, okay? It took a lot of shots, okay? A lot of holes in it right now. We're trying to repair it as we move. We're trying to turn it at the same time. That's the best way to describe it. You cannot get out of this mess in a year or two years. It's going to take a number of years of consistency, staying on point, doing things the right way, ensuring you do not spend money unwisely. Sounds like your home budget. That's how I'm treating it. I'm treating it like it's your money because it really is your money. It's our money. So again, it's still being written now, but we are going to have some significant challenges going forward because of the mistakes of the past that have put us in a hole, and we have the biggest deficit in the state of New York right now, and we have to deal with it. But my pledge very simply is this. What I've been doing all along, my administration, is we're going to continue doing the same thing and do the best we can to deal with the crisis as it comes out to us. We will do that straight out. There's been a lot made of some of the tensions going on in Rockland County, cultural, religious, however you want to call it. We have to understand something. I firmly believe that one of the biggest issues we have here is not so much religious tension or religious or antisemitics. That's not the case, I don't think. I think we have people here who are looking to play that up and use it to their own devices. That's what I see happening. We convened an interfaith summit. We brought three of the most noted regional religious leaders known to this area to facilitate a sit-down with a number of respected religious leaders in Rockland County. And it was really an amazing experience to have that. It was closed door, laid a lot of things on the table. The facilities were excellent, and we came out together, and we learned a lot. We really did. We found out, we discovered a lot of issues that were there and some of the dynamics behind them. And what was pledged at that interfaith summit is that we are going to work to ensure that those who have agendas, those who use religion for their own devices will be shut out because we are going to speak together as a group. And what we'll be looking to do, we'll be looking to not only deal with issues as they arise to speak with one voice, but even celebrate positive things that occur, which I think is equally important. That came out at the summit also, that it was important that we celebrate positive things that occur in the religious areas. And we all celebrate that. We had the Islamic Center for Valley Cottage there. They had something going on at their facility that weekend, that Saturday. And a few of us went down there to see it. And this is the idea, is that there's much more that joins us than separates us. That's a fact. Once we lose sight of the fact that we're all God's children, we've lost it. Well, we are. We were all God's children. And when we, when, once we understand that and focus on that, we're much better off. But there are people out there, I think one rabbi made a comment. It was really, is it Rabbi Patassi? Patassi made this comment. Today's anti-Semites, tomorrow's racist. It's a travel. You know, you have certain people out there who will use whatever they have to use to make their point and have no interest in healing. They have an interest in their own agenda. They have an interest in helping people who have natural fears be more fearful. All right? And we see that here in Rockland County. So, you know, we're moving forward. There'll be a statement of principles that'll be coming out very shortly. We will function as a group. And the idea here is to reassure the people of Rockland that the leaders of this county are working together, that the issue is not what some will have you believe. And once there's a belief and understanding that there are people who are invested in this particular area, those with agendas will be shut out because their voices will become very small. So this is a work in progress. It's not something that is happening overnight, but it's something that we are working on, and I feel very positive about it to date. Tappan Zee Bridge, another issue. It's just been up, been up on TV again. I actually got stuck. I don't commute anymore, and I got stuck at the bridge the other day. I had to go to the doctors in Westchester. But I have been having ongoing conversations with the governor's office. The project is moving forward, obviously. We're looking at $2 billion of economy, dollars coming to our economy over the next five years, 7,000 jobs. I know in Rockland County, we have nearly 80 companies who are actively engaged on a regular basis in building the bridge. So this is a boon to the economy. There's no question about it. The way this finalizes is the other issue, tolls, for example, is a big concern we all have. You probably all know this already. You can hear me saying this in 2012. A $15 toll is unacceptable. The governor's aware of it. I've spoken about this numerous times. And I'm looking at it not from a perspective of, oh, we don't want that kind of toll. I point out very simple things. Don't compare this to the George Washington Bridge. Don't compare it to the city bridges because the George Washington Bridge is a port authority bridge. They have real estate and airports attached to it. Different ballgame. It goes right to the city, right? Absolutely. The city bridges, most of that money goes to the subways. 94% of the money that's collected in the thruway goes to the thruway. Most, the other bit of it, money goes to the canal system. That was something the legislature did some years ago, which is ridiculous. But your money, your toll dollars, is going to the canal system. That should change. 40% of the Tappan Zee Bridge tolls goes to the thruway. Now we have a bridge that's being built, and we get a loan from the federal government. Our, my perspective is, why is the thruway not helping pay for this? Because they don't want to pay for it. Well, you took up 40%. You were happy about doing that. That was okay. No nonsense. The Tappan Zee Bridge is a linchpin of the thruway. The thruway in the entirety should be helping paying for that. Simple. Okay? Consolidation. Why do we have a bridge authority and a thruway authority? Oh, that's, that's, that's it. The consolidation. We can do that. Okay? There's a driving, there's a reason why I'm saying this. Oh, by the way, the Tappan Zee Bridge goes from Rockland to Westchester, correct? Not to New York City, correct? And most of the people who take the Tappan Zee Bridge work in Westchester, correct?
Yeah, or the Bronx.
Yeah, but most of them work in Westchester, or the Bronx, right. But what other bridge goes to Westchester County? There's one other, from Rockland. The Bear Mountain Bridge. How much is that?
$1.50.
A buck 50. It's interesting. They don't compare the Tappan Zee Bridge toll to the other bridge. It's the same connection. They compare it to one in the city to try to sell you on a 12 or $15 toll. The scary part, we have citizens who actually go along with it. Oh, yeah, we're going to pay 12 bucks to go over to George Washington Bridge. No. Stop. You're killing me here. Stop. What I'm saying is, no, we're not. Okay? And here's the thing. Government has an, government has an ability to really screw things up. They really do. As we all know, did you know the gas in Rockland County is better than the gas in Jersey? Did you know that?
[laughter]
You have to know that, right? It costs 40 cents more a gallon. It's got to be better. And they pump it in Jersey. It must be great gas. It's more expensive because government made it so. And we unfortunately are a border county, and we get hammered. If you live in Queens, you're not going to run to Bronx to go, especially over a toll. You're not going to run to a Bronx to go buy gas. People here, we go fly down. We fly down and buy gas. And even sometimes, the price is like 13 cents difference, and they're driving down to Jersey. You know, it's like the Field of Dreams. They will come. If you build it, they will come. Build a gas station, they will come. And we lose, half our gas stations are closed. We have people out of work. Ratables, you have empty gas stations, no ratable. You get no taxes out of it. This is a good deal, right? Thank you, government. I appreciate that. Okay? You live in Westchester County, you live in Connecticut, and you're heading to the Palisades Center Mall, which brings in 22% of our sales tax revenue, which supplants the need for property tax revenue. That's a good thing. You get to the bridge, I go, 15 bucks. Come make a left, go south, Ridge Hill in Yonkers, eight, nine miles south. We shop there. Government makes moves that impacts consumer decisions. That is a fact. This is why I'm so fervent on this. We cannot let these tolls go to those kind of numbers. So my position is, we have one of the bridges, it's a buck 50. This is five bucks. Leave it alone. People think I'm crazy. Good, let them think I'm crazy. I think it makes perfectly good sense. I need more people to start talking about this. So those who are here, those who are going to hear what I'm saying, bring it out. I have a partner across the river, Rob Astorino, feels the same way. Steve Newhouse feels the same way. We have a council of lower Hudson Valley County executives. We formed it up first month I was in office, first time we met each other. Said, let's have some weight because we don't, we don't really count, apparently, in this state. So we've banded together, dragged our state representatives with us, and we're trying to speak with a unified voice. If something impacts, it's like NATO. If it affects one, the rest have to jump in to help. So we're trying to find those kind of areas. Infrastructure. I'm not going too long because we have questions. Infrastructure, very important. Okay? I'm focused on this because we have, even though we have challenges financially, there's no question about it, our debt is not as high as our deficit. Our debt is actually below where it could be. And I'm looking at expanding in a very judicious way the debt in a responsible manner, where we are investing. That's what bonding should be, an investment. Infrastructure is very critical. Okay? You may have noticed a lot of the county roads are looking a lot better now. I give a lot of credit to our county highway department. I told them, get out as soon as you can. They're at the end of April paving. As soon as the plant's open, they're out there.
March.
March?
End of March.
End of March? I've been corrected. You see, you can't say I take credit for things that I'm not supposed to. End of March? Wow. They didn't tell me. See, they don't tell me everything. But we're doing a lot of things because, you know something? If you let things go, it's going to cost a dollar now, it's going to cost four or five later. Those are our kids and our grandkids who are paying for that. So if we can do it now, let's do it now. It's cheaper. It makes more sense. It's cheaper, it makes more sense. We've already saddled them with high taxes and we're trying to stop that. Let's level it off and move forward, so at least I have a chance to have our kids stay here, Grimont Grand Parkers stay here. We have to stop this, okay? Locally, Montebello Road Bridge, we have major repairs underway, as you well know, that's slated for completion by the end of the year. Coggers Road, Town Line Road, you may have seen our new pothole repair truck, it's recycling, they take everything you can imagine and put it, any kind of tar or roof shingles, they put it in there and they recycle it. The cost is just about 55% of what it normally costs to get the fresh asphalt, and it works. And it's just, it's an amazing, and again, this is something a highway department put together and got done. Our economy, which Scott mentioned, my three-legged stool, it is critical that we bring wealth to this county. We have to bring in a very responsible manner, smart growth, radibles here, that will minimize the demand on the people who are living here for taxes, higher property taxes. We have to change the dynamics here, we have to change the paradigms. Most importantly, we've been doing it in a responsible manner. We owe the people who live here, the average person has their entire life invested in their home, we cannot betray that. But we have to find ways of bringing business in, clean radibles. One of the things that's been happening is some of our data centers. Bloomberg data came in, GHD data came in into Orange Town, these are very clean radibles. And they don't use a lot of water, I've heard this story somewhere, it came up, somebody came up, I'm not going to mention a word. They're using water, they're going to make another, that's not true. It's not true. They're not over crazy water users, all right? So it's not going to create a new need for another, you know, supposed diesel plant, that was the other thing we came up with. But they are clean radibles, they have very little demand on schools, very little demand on police. And those are our drivers for local taxes. That's 60, 65% for your schools, your town taxes are 20 some odd percent, and a significant part of that is your police, law enforcement. So, you know, these are smart things. Here in Suffolk, one of the biggest, Raymore Flanagan, obviously, is looking to increase their footprint here, they're looking for expansion of its super regional distribution facility. So we're looking forward to that coming to fruition. Novartis. Novartis is a challenge. We were advised very early on administration that we were going to close, their intention was to close by 2017 to flatten the entire property. I have to admit one thing, Novartis has been doing a very good job in working with us. And we have been, we have been in a number of meetings, I know the village, our village representatives here really are aware of all this. We're working with the IDA, the Industrial Development Agency, our REDC, our Rocket Economic Development Corporation. Novartis has engaged Cushman Wakefield, one of the premier realtors in the region, to try to market this property. They have alternately, we've had meetings where we were like, this is not going to be a happy moment, it just didn't look, it was going places of late. We did get some positive news, nothing conclusive, honestly, as of yet. But again, there is some interest by a major financial institution right now, that just recently came to our attention, and the thought is a data center, all right, a repurposing of part of the property. This could end up being like Pfizer, a very similar situation. We're hopeful if that happens, that would be good. But Novartis is not, has total strength, they don't want to stay there. So we're not seeing that same Pfizer model as something that's going to occur when it comes to the Novartis property. There is attention being paid to it. I can tell you, the town, the village for sure, and the county, we've been at the meetings to try to do whatever we can do to try to save that parcel, so we don't lose it and it would flat ground and a huge impact upon the tax base here. RNG of the developers, I have read a lot about this, I've had some conversations. The initial IDA approach with the potential tax breaks with the inducements have expired. I know there was a lot of conversation amongst the village and the schools. The position of the county really is one that is very reliant upon the local area. The county is not there, because I'm the last signature on it, so it comes down, any kind of inducement, I'm the last person who signs it. My position is very simple. If our local village or our local, or our town and our schools agree on something, I'd have to really see something that I would be hard pressed not to approve it, because it just really wouldn't be right. I know there's been a lot of conversation, I know, I guess it's expired now, there has to be another inducement at this point, something new. So, you know, as that plays out, I'll be listening to our Suffolk representatives for some guidance on this and see where we want to go with it. But just as an understanding, as my understanding of this particular project is, this is an area that's blighted, it really has not, there's not a lot of hope for this particular parcel to be developed. When people talk about inducements and tax breaks, I liken it to, if you're walking down a street and there's a $5 bill in the street and you walk by it, did you lose money? It's a good question, if you think about it, right? Not really, you didn't have it, okay? And I use, as a loose example, if you have a parcel that's not going to be developed, you have nothing there, and what you do have is blight. If you have something that's making your community worse, does it not make sense to try to induce a developer to come in and put something that's positive there? And delay taxes, you know, have, do a pilot, bring the taxes later on. Because again, if that parcel is developed and, there's a minimal impact upon services, and that's the key issue, I think it's why the school district would probably like this about it, because I read about what they were proposing and I wasn't quite clear myself as the average citizen, so I just left it alone, and I'm not going to discuss it here. But if the impact upon your services is not that heavy, you know something, maybe it's a good idea. You know, but again, this is something I look towards a local community to give me guidance, because you see it, you're living it, by and large, from the tax perspective, you're going to have to handle it. So if it makes sense to you, by and large, I'm going to go with that. So I know that's something that's being worked on now. Not-for-profits, a lot of conversation about the not-for-profits. We have one very simple goal, these are your tax dollars. Any money that goes to any agency is your tax money. You have a rightful expectation that we hold agencies accountable, and we know what they're doing with your money, it's not being wasted, it's being spent in a way that makes sense, and that you're getting your bang for your buck. I mean theoretically, a contract agency, not-for-profit, who's getting funding, should be doing something that we as in government would want to do, and we cannot, and they can do it at a better price. They could do it more efficiently, all right? So we have expectations, business plan, mission statement, administrative course that makes sense, things I spoke about when I ran for office. We're continuing that, we are in the middle of doing that now, and we actually have a lot of the not-for-profits down, helping us put together a plan of action, where there'll be procurements, and that's something that the controllers told us. Rockland County, we, again, inherited many, many things. We're changing their culture in this county to make it work the way it's supposed to work. Some people don't like that. I'm sorry, I wasn't elected to go along with the program, I was elected to fix this, all right? It is against policy, good public policy and the state controller, to give money away just like this. I would suspect the average person does not want to see their money just given away. I would suspect the average person says, you know something, Mr. Day, if you're going to give money to an agency, we want to know what they're doing. Are they doing it properly? Can you confirm they're doing it? Are there any audits? Any inspections? Makes sense, right? And that's what we're putting together right now. And again, the agencies themselves are working with us to try to get to that point. So anything you may hear, which I think some misinterpret, a desire on my part to do things properly, is somehow not doing things right, and there's a big difference. I'm looking to do this the right way and reflect the values of people who have told me they want it done a certain way. And that's, in a simple sense, is what we're trying to do. I think, yeah, if you want, let's take a two-minute break, and then we'll take some questions? Okay? Okay, anyway, I've spoken enough, I'd like to take questions. Judy?
Yeah, I'm interested, you talked about that meeting with the rabbis.
Yes.
Imam. Were there any Hasidic rabbis?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know, because that awful film that came around.
Right.
The penis film, has scared, scared a lot of that community. And it seems to be their real communication barrier to tell them that the rest of the country is not a group of Christians.
Right. Let me, I don't know if you can hear this, but essentially what Judy mentioned was the video comparing Rockland County to Nazi Germany. The question was, was there anybody, any Hasidim, Hasidic rabbis at the meeting? Yes, they were. Who wants me to sing? That would empty this room out, everybody's shutting this off, it'd be all over. Let me be really clear about this video, okay? Look, there was a Facebook battle going on, you have to block the block, you have block the hate, you got, you know something, maybe I'm old, but that's Facebook, all right? And some of the things on there are not very nice, no question about it. I have filters on mine, and it's still difficult for my people to keep up with it, because people say stupid things, okay? But to that point, for anybody to put a video out, that's up in the ante, number one, and to compare this county to Nazi Germany is abhorrent. It's abhorrent. It's abhorrent. There's no other way of putting it. And I've had people from all backgrounds tell me the same thing. But understand something, the people who put these videos out are the same people I'm talking about, who are looking for their own agenda, they're not looking to heal. They're looking to use their position to scare people. We have, you know, I learned this as a cop. You know, you look at a street, okay, you have drug deals in the street, they got guns, you know what they're doing, and unless you start looking behind that, you don't see there are honest, decent people in those homes who are scared. Unless, the guy who was a boadigger in the corner, all right? All the dirtbags go in and the cops come. If you don't look behind that, you think that the store owner is actually involved and he is scared. That's what you have here in some areas of this county. You have insular communities who do not listen to what we're doing right now, they don't have internet, they get their news over a phone and by mouth. It is such, it is so convenient for people who purport to be leaders to use that fear of authority, that insular belief, to their own advantage. Keep people ignorant and scare them. That's what this is about, all right? There's no other way of putting it. It rankles me beyond belief. My father was a World War II veteran. If he was here right now and hearing that, he would be beyond himself at this point. To compare this kind of Nazi Germany is absurd. Understand something, when issues of hate have come up in this county, when Mr. Legislative Weider, who apparently is aligned with this particular group, when somebody sent, when somebody sent a picture of him being beheaded, the first elected official who said something was me. And every other elected official said the same thing. So, you know, I'm sorry, this county is not the way that film purported, that is absolutely ridiculous. It's not true. And you see me getting upset, I do get upset at this. I've lived in this county for over 30 years, I love this county. This is like saying, my family is like this. No, it's not true. All right? So unfortunately, understand the dynamics. You have people like, people who put a video like that, you have race baiters, religious baiters, they're there to do one thing, they don't want to divide. The idea of that summit was to join. There are too many good people, but unfortunately, good people typically don't say anything. The silent majority, as it used to be said, they don't talk about these things, they know how they feel. But when the rhetoric gets dialed up so much, everybody's fearful. All I should, what we're looking to do right now is to say, no, enough, enough of the rhetoric. There are too many responsible people in this community who know what's true and what's not, and we're going to join together to make sure it's clear and shut these people out. Yes, ma'am?
Phyllis.
Phyllis, got a microphone now? No singing. Now let's have a good voice. Now let's have a good voice, that they can sing.
There's three issues. One, I found the, I went to the Garner Villa Arts Center recently, and everybody should go, they've done a fantastic job.
Robin Rosenberg. Robin Rosenberg is very involved up there, yes?
She's very good.
Yep.
And I actually had a factory there when it wasn't, and there was no reason for it to fall apart. But I was talking to one of the arts people and I said, I don't understand what happened. I said, they didn't dredge the streams there? He said, that was only part of it. And this is something that should really be looked into. United Water opened up a dam up the river, and that's the water that came in and destroyed that, so much of the 176-year-old building. And the worst part is, United Water has in their contract that they're not responsible. So that is something that should be looked at and changed, because if you're opening it, why are you not responsible? I didn't care.
Okay, that is something, it's an ongoing legal issue, I'm not going to go too deep into it right now.
Did you know of that issue?
I'm well aware of it, and it's a legal issue, so we're not going to get too deep into it right now.
Right, now the other two issues that I think are very important is what has to do with children and has to do with the Hasidic community. There are many people, and it's hard to see, because their vehicles all have dark windows. And that's the other issue, I thought dark windows were illegal. They don't use child seats in their cars. And it is apparently, if they're stopped in the town of Ramapo, they're not giving tickets for them.
Okay.
And who are they endangering? They're endangering.
The children, absolutely right.
Well, that's too bad.
Okay, let's, we can't, you're going to confuse the audience. Let me, this is being streamed. Let me answer the question, okay? First of all, first of all, I'll make it as simple as possible, okay? As a former law enforcement officer, all right, if I see a child not belted in a seatbelt, that person's getting a ticket.
But you can't see it.
If you can't, if you can't see through a window, there's a certain amount of opaqueness that's allowed under 375 of the VTL, I can't remember, I remember this stuff. If you can't see inside, you get a ticket just for that, okay? So, but to your question, if you believe that the local police in Ramapo are not giving summonses, what I would suggest you do is have a meeting with Chief Brower or the town supervisor and express, I don't command, I don't command the Ramapo police, but you know, look, you have Captain Brad Wydell, who is a good man, I know Brad a long time, Pete Brower, bring this concern there, and if you have some specifics, it'd be helpful. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I guess I'll wait.
The runner, here comes the runner. That's why he's so skinny.
Good evening, my name is Mel Post and I reside in the village of Havastra in Harbors.
I was just there yesterday.
I just saw you yesterday. You were a little bit late because of the bridge, but I'm not going to hold that against you.
Thanks, Mel.
What I'd like to do actually is, number one, invite you to address the people in Harbors once again.
Okay.
The last time, to my recollection, that you were there was when you were running for office.
Yep, I'd be happy to do that.
Correct. And I think they'd like to hear what you had to say tonight, as well as bring up the various issues that they have. In addition to that, I want to express a concern which you're probably familiar with.
You can call and make, we'll make an appointment to do that.
You have it.
Okay.
Concern that you're probably familiar with, but I'd like to hear what you have to say about it. And that's CSX and the oil trains that are coming down from the Bacon.
Yep.
Right behind.
Bakken Oil, yes.
Right behind the entire village. We do have some ways of leaving the village should something tragic happen, but not a whole lot. Harbors will now, with the advent of the new building, be something like 500 families.
Right.
The overpass might be rendered useless in a situation such as that, as well as some of the other roads depending upon the length of the train. So considering that that overpass might be rendered useless, I'd like to know what you're doing at this point, specifically touching on that.
Okay, very good. There is a bit of a history with our interaction and county government with CSX. Now, understanding to begin with, CSX does not have to answer the law government. They can answer the defense, that's it. So that's number one. So we're, we're operating, you know, unfortunately, at a bit of a disadvantage, but I like challenges, you know? The first thing we asked the CSX was, let's try to work together, which I think is a good approach to begin with, especially when they can tell us to, you know, we're not dealing with you. And we asked something very simple. We have different areas of the county where the speed limit is 50 and 40, all right? And what we said is, why not reduce the speed to 40? This way at least is lesser of a chance of any derailments, any problems, okay? It's, and we pointed out to them that on a trip through the county, it would have cost them less than two minutes. Less than two minutes. We pointed out to them that the sheriff's department had put radar guns on the trains and found their average speed was 28 and a half miles an hour. So it seemed to me, from a good faith perspective, that was the least that could be done. There, we tried, we tried, we tried, no luck. We tried to have other meetings with them, no luck. Now it got to a point, okay, if they're not going to be nice about it, we're going to be more confrontational about it, all right? I give Governor Cuomo and the National Railroad Authority a lot of credit. They did a surprise inspection on the rails. And they found numerous loose bolts, cotter pins missing, things that were problems. In one stretch of a mile, not in this local area, by the way, they found 10 critical violations. The answer from CSX is, we inspect the railway three times a week. My response publicly, over and over again, they must have a sleeping mask on. If they missed that much in one mile, they must have a sleeping mask on. I couldn't say anything more colorful because it wouldn't have been received well. You've got to be careful what you say. But, I mean, we have been battling with them from the beginning, since they decided not to work with us. We have had some very good partners, Senator Schumer has been very helpful with us. There have been, there already have been recommendations made. And the timeline, I think, could be more aggressive to change the cars, the 111 cars, to different kind of cars, that's been one of the major issues. I've said very clearly, if, in the area further south from where you are, Whitman Street, which I'm familiar with in Congress, which is right alongside of the rail. If the managers and the executives of CSX lived on that stretch, you'd be darn sure there'd be changes made, all right? If anybody has ever seen, I would urge people, there was a training session up in the Fire Emergency Services Center, because our people train for this kind of, these kind of scenarios. And from my perspective, as a former law enforcement person, it's critical that our, we have an absolute ability to be top-notch in plans to get, to deal with any kind of crisis. And we have very good people. I've been impressed in what I've seen. And I don't impress anyone, just what I've seen in New York City. They do a great job there. If you look at the crisis we had in Quebec, train came loose, had the Bakken crewed, and it was human error. Went straight down to the town. And we got a lot of publicity in this. And this is how you deal with this, you have to be public about it. And my media, my communications guy has done a great job with this. Because that's what gets their attention. That's what gets people's attention. What happened in this town in Quebec, just over the border from Maine, it would be the same as if the area from the courthouse down to St. Augustine's Church, two blocks in each direction, was completely obliterated. It literally looked like Hiroshima. That's how bad this looked. So we, what we do now is we are constantly bringing these issues forward. We have had some success already with the 111 cars, with the pressure, again. I give the Senator a lot of credit in being a partner with this. And this is not about party. I mean, people are going to have Republican jelly in me and, this is about getting effective representation. I have Republicans and Democrats who've been helpful in this county. And I'll speak and credit them when they do it. We do have a change now in the type of cars. The schedule should be more aggressive. But it's something I'm aware of. We have been fighting for it to get this ameliorated as best we can. And we've already moved, we moved the needle already a bit. And we'll continue to do it. Anybody else? Somebody who hasn't answered a question? Yes?
What can we do about the Medicare fraud that continues to go on in this county over and over and over again? I understand religious weddings not recognized by the state, not recognized by the federal government. And a woman who has 10 children, who is religiously married, is not recognized as being married. And she's a single, she's a single mother now, she's eligible for Medicaid. This is such a drain on our taxes.
The one thing, one thing, again, I kind of touched this before. There are a number of things that I spoke about that could be changed at the state level. We have to, we have to abide by the state rules with Medicaid. Even though we pay 70-plus million dollars a year for Medicaid. That's our tax dollars. But the state runs it. And I've said this more than once. If you want me to, if you want to run it, then you own it. Don't come to us for the money. If you want me to pay for it, let me own it, I'll run it. There are things that are common sense, which I touched on earlier, I'm not going to repeat again. But means testing, for example. As far, as far as, you know, how many kids you have, the way things are in this country, you cannot stop funding because of the number of children you have. That's, again, a state rule. And we could debate whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. As far as, as far as the marital status, the driving issue is money in the household. It's not marital status. There's, if you find, if you have a home with a woman and six kids, and a husband, and a boyfriend's in the house contributing to the household, that money counts. So it's a matter, it's a matter of finding out what the household dynamics are. So the issues really are more, income is being hidden. And it's difficult to find these things out, it's not simple. But unfortunate, unfortunately, we have rules we have to abide by. We had a situation where we had the Kalels. And we had students, students that were getting paid off the books. They were getting stipends. And we said, no, no, that's income, that counts. Everybody in this, we all understand income counts in this world, except here. The state actually said they should not be doing that. Our social services commission said, okay. Went to all the Kalels, these are schools in certain communities, and said, you've got to stop. All of them stopped except one. And they fought. And the administrative judge of the state said, oh, that's okay. But didn't you tell us that they couldn't do that? These are the things, you know, and then we get yelled at because we're picking on people. Well, this is something the state and their order said they should not be doing.
It's not a religious issue.
Exactly, I agree. And you know, anybody who's been, and forgive me for using cops, firemen, and nurses, okay? The way I was raised, all right? If we had two children, three children, and we have to raise them. You know, and what happened, mom would work at midnight, dad would work a 4:00 to 12:00, or a day tour. And we'd manage. We wouldn't go to other, we didn't want to go to our parents to have them watch our kids, much less strangers, much less daycare centers.
Right, and you paid taxes.
You know, dynamics change, you know? And here in this situation we identified, we had mom doing, they were both working the same shift. You know, and to me, it's like, I know it's not legal, I get that. But responsibility to me, responsibility of community says, well, why doesn't mom work 8:00 to noon? And dad work from noon to 4:00? And then you don't have to rely on tax dollars to care for your children. It's frustrating, it really is, but we try.
The last question, this gentleman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming tonight. I have one thing. We have so many nice retail establishments here in Rockland County. The mall being, Palisades Mall being really nice. But I don't see anything from an entertainment perspective. We always have to, it seems, to leave the county to find some type of an entertainment. And I was wondering how receptive the county would be to thinking about something along with gaming, whether it be slot parlors or something along those lines of a casino initiative. It's so upsetting to have to go all the way over to Yonkers all the time and go over that bridge. I know so many people that do this. And they're so upset having to go back and forth over the river or go all the way up to Sullivan County for an entertainment experience. I know there was something that was going to happen in Tuxedo that did not make it.
Yes.
But I was just curious, how receptive Rockland County is to say, let's bring some casino initiative into this county and bring a lot of revenue into this county and really help the taxpayers out.
Okay. That's a, that's a great question. And here's the reality of it. The reality is that two things you're talking about are heavily regulated. The Tuxedo, that was Gentec, was it? I think it was looking to go up there? Gentec? The decision that was made, was made at the state level. We had no, we weren't even in the game. We weren't even allowed to be part of it.
It'd be nice to be in the game.
No, I understand it. But again, you're talking about the most heavily, one of the most heavily regulated industries in the state. And it's not a free market. You know, from my perspective, you know, I look at, we are actively engaged in bringing in ratables, okay? We have no limits from the beginning. As long as a ratable comes in and respects the community they're coming to, and it's not something that's detrimental to the community, that's, then we go from there. We use our county planning department, our county drainage agencies to move ahead of the curve. I have met with so many potential buyers. My attitude is that if you're looking to invest in this county, I think it's incumbent upon me as your county executive to go and meet these people. I'm an ex-salesman. I understand you're trying to sell your place, you're ingratiating yourself to people, you're trying to make them feel welcome. Par Pharmaceutical in Chestnut Ridge. Classic example, they were in a situation where they needed a decision on an expansion. They went to the village boards, they were running into a time scenario. Unfortunately, and I'm not being sad about Chestnut Ridge now, to be very clear, government in general doesn't, often doesn't understand time is money. That is just an unfortunate reality, because it's not the private sector. I understand that. So what I did is, I, because now we're thinking, they almost lost Par. They almost lost to the Jersey. I reached out to Sam Presti, the mayor of Chestnut Ridge, and I said, and I'm very respectful because I'm mindful of the fact the village has their own government. It's not for me to say you should or should not do anything. I explained the situation to him. I said, Sam, is there something we can do? All right, I would have the same, should have the same situation, I reached out to these gentlemen who work in, who are in the village, village board. I explained the situation to him. Long story short, they were able to come up with a planning and, a planning and zoning board meeting, I think, in August. They approved it in September. Par not only stayed, but they brought their people from Jersey here. That's a home run. And the ancillary positives of this is, down the end of the road, at Red Hill and Chestnut Ridge Road, the deli there, all sentences, where are these people coming from? Always, all these people making sandwiches, what's going on? Another 150 people working there. It'll be 100 and some odd more. So this is, this is the positive part of economic development being involved where you can. I think I'm getting the, I'm going to say I'm getting the finger, but I'm not getting the finger. I'm getting the home run finger. But we got to close up? Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I'll stay afterwards. Anyway, I want to thank everybody who's tuned in to watch this tonight. This is, again, part of what we've been doing. This is the fourth town forum we've had. We've hit North Rockland and the three towns, Orange Towns, Ramapo now, and Clarkstown before. We'll continue this. I think it's important. It's important that you get a feel for what's going on in your government. It's really, when you break it down, you know, in simple ways, it's not unlike your home and your budgets at home.